I'm going to call to order now regular Beach Haven Borough Council. It is Monday, June 14th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. And this evening, our flag salute will be led by Mr. Trump. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First one to the New Jersey Living Public Meetings Act, adequately an electronic notice of this meeting is provided. But posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building, on the Beach Haven website, mailing saying to Beach Haven Times, The Asbury Park Press, and the rest of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert?
Here.
The first announcement we have to make tonight is not on the agenda, but there have been a lot of questions about the cannabis issue. And just to let everybody know, there will be a presentation at the Monday, July 12th meeting. There will be a presentation and a discussion, and possibly action taken by council. Just so you know, because as I said, there's been a lot of concern and questions and phone calls. And tonight, we also have a very brief presentation by Dr. Bob Stern, our resident expert on wind turbines. I was kind of surprised when I talked to some people who recently got back from Florida, California, wherever, and they had no idea about the Atlantic Shores Wind Barn that is proposed right off our coast. So Dr. Stern has been kind enough to agree to join us tonight, and he will do his presentation. Dr. Stern?
The board is on?
We don't have a way to move on and catch up?
I don't see it.
Sherry, you want to go with the management?
Sure. And then if she joins the meeting, we can do that. Okay. Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of May 1st to May 31st, 2021 were $3,252,291.61. Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of May totaled $1,356,192.8. Cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled $15,43,957.21. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of May 1st to May 31st, 2021 were $138,275.29. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of May totaled $38,759.11. Cash balance in the water utility account submitted by our treasurer, Sherry Bolliver. I have minutes for approval. We have a May 27th agenda meeting and a May 27th executive session for approval about formal reading.
Anybody have any questions about the minutes in this meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Ordinance 2021-13C and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 212 zoning of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean State of New Jersey to more clearly define porches and ductless systems. Final reading.
Since it's final reading, we will open it to the public. If you have a comment, please make yourselves known to Sherry, and please limit yourself to three minutes.
If you're new to Zoom and you'd like to speak to an ordinance or speak during public comment, you want to raise an electronic hand under your participants tab. Where's Bob Stern?
I say it's going to call.
You can raise an electronic hand, or you can unmute yourself and make yourself known. If you're on a regular phone, you can star 6 and announce yourself. Seeing none.
Okay, if there are no public comments, then we will close it to the public. And is there a motion to approve 2021-13C?
Motion to approve.
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-14C and ordinance repealing Chapter 27 personnel of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean State of New Jersey to repeal Chapter 27 of the Borough Code entitled Personnel Effectors April 1st, 2021. Final reading.
Again, it's final reading, so we're opening it to the public. And anybody who'd like to make a comment? No? No, seeing none, we will close it to public comment. And is there a motion to approve 2021-14C?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
2021-15C and ordinance amending Chapter 167 Site Plan Review of the Borough Code, the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean State of New Jersey concerning expiration of site plan approvals and applicability determination from the NJTDP to set time limits to site plan approvals granted by the Land Use Board. Final reading.
And it is open to the public for comment? Any takers?
Any who would like to be heard? An ordinance 2021-15C, you can raise an electronic hand.
No?
Seeing none.
All right, closed to the public. Is there a motion to approve 2021-15C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
See, we have Dr. Stern. Can we go with that real quickly?
Um, sure.
Okay, and Dr. Stern, I already introduced you, but basically, as our resident expert, and I explained that things are starting to move very quickly in the Atlantic Shores project, and just wanted to give you a chance to briefly educate people and bring them up to speed.
Okay, thanks, Colleen. Live on Fourth Street in Beach Haven, leading a group on the island, bipartisan group of residents, people who rent businesses, called the Coalition for Wind Without Impact, who are basically concerned with the location of the current proposal. As many of you know, it's proposed very close to shore. The turbines, the wind turbines of today are very large. There are other issues with this lease area involving endangered species like the North Atlantic right whale and other problems. So we are not opposed to wind energy in general, but this particular location is just not the place for large wind turbines. So we have been trying to work with the federal agency, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, I'll just call them BOM for brevity, to simply get another area that's further offshore considered. And that area is called the Hudson South Call Area. It's actually a much larger area. It starts 30 miles offshore, so visibility of the turbines would not be a problem. And it has other benefits. It has more wind energy and a lot of other advantages. They have actually proposed this area for wind energy development, so we're simply asking them, why can't that be considered an alternative to the current project? The answer so far is no, and I will get back to that a little later. There's other key issues here, like, for example, in New York State, they, the BOM people, the federal agency, have given New York a turbine exclusion zone of about 17 miles. So for any project off of New York State, there will be no turbines sighted closer than 17 miles. So the obvious question is, why isn't the same thing being applied to New Jersey? We've asked them that. Again, the answer there is no. Every state is different. And I suppose that's true, but I'm not sure our eyesight is different, so that's still a puzzle. So the bottom line here is, we've asked this agency to make some reasonable concessions. They don't want to do anything. So we're at the point where we're putting more pressure on them, and we're starting to think more in terms of legal interventions. We submitted a request to them to basically stop all the activities at the current lease area based on criteria in the law which we believe are met. We've also asked the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities not to make any power purchase agreements with this company until the environmental impact statement is done, because that predetermines how many turbines you're going to have. And it's not appropriate to make those kinds of decisions till you know all the environmental impacts. We have retained an attorney who we believe is very experienced at this, very reasonable rates, and we're going to start to strategize with him and his team as to what legal paths we can take here to get the federal agency to pay attention to our concerns and hopefully to move this project out further. Just some other areas you should be aware of. We have not been happy with the information that's been provided to the island from the company. And so we're holding our own forum, virtual forum, June 23rd, 7 o'clock. We're going to have some good people on there, knowledgeable about the issues. We'll make short presentations, and then you can, anyone participating can ask any question they want. The details for that will be on our website. It's saveLBI.com, and the specifics of how you can enter that will be on there. And so, last but not least, there is a place on the website, and by the way, I think there's a lot of good information on the website. But this effort with the lawyers will cost money, and so we are asking for contributions from people if you think we're on the right track here, if you could make some modest contributions that will sustain us in carrying out these legal actions. So unfortunately, it looks like we're going to have to go to court a lot earlier than we thought, but we're just not getting any cooperation from the federal agencies or, in fact, the state agency, the Board of Public Utilities. And again, I want to emphasize, what we're trying to do here is not stop offshore wind energy. We're just trying to move it to what we think is a sensible location. So I'll stop there. Appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date on this. And, you know, Sherry has my email, my phone number. If anyone has any questions, she can give it to you. I'd be glad to talk to you at a later time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stern.
Okay, we'll jump back to it. 2021-16 is the 2021 salary ordinance to set the annual base salary and wage ranges of the officers and employees of the Borough of Beach Haven. Final reading.
And this is open to the public for comment, so please make yourself known. No names?
Mm-hmm.
All right, seeing none, we'll close it to public comment. And is there a motion to approve 2021-16?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-17, an ordinance of the Borough of Beach Haven authorizing the execution of an encroachment easement agreement to grant an encroachment easement agreement to Bay Village for the DAP awning at East Grove 14. Final reading.
Again, open to the public for comment. Please make yourself known.
Seeing none.
Okay, close the public comment. Is there a motion to approve 2021-17?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-18C and ordinance amending Chapter 12 Fire Company and Chapter 13 First Aid Squad in relation to background checks for volunteer members. Final reading.
Mayor, if I may, it's my understanding that the council may wish to amend this ordinance, and I think we should do that before the public has the opportunity for hearing, just so they know what we're doing. So if it is the council's preference to amend the ordinance, we would need a motion now and a second and a vote to remove Section 2. Section 2 deals with changes to the First Aid Squad. So if such a motion is made and approved, that would mean that the First Aid Squad ordinance would remain as has been the case for the last 13 years.
I move to make the amendment. Okay, so we have Resolution 137, 2021. It's amending the ordinance 2021-18C entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 12 Fire Company and Chapter 13 First Aid Squad in relation to background checks for volunteer members and approving the ordinance as amended. Do you understand what you're motioning for? Nancy, you're a guest.
I move to amend that.
Let me just clarify one more time.
Yeah, sure. So all we're doing now is amending the ordinance to remove any of the proposed changes to Chapter 13, which is First Aid Squad. So that will remain status quo. So if this motion is approved, the public hearing and final adoption would be on the changes to Chapter 12, which is Fire Department.
Okay. I have a motion on the table from Dr. Davis.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
So now you can open the floor.
For a hearing, yes, on the remaining portions of the ordinance.
I will open the, to the public, for 2021-18C as it was recently stated and amended.
Correct.
No?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none, then we will close the floor to public comment. And is there a motion to approve 2021-18C as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-19C is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 106 Games of Chance and adding a new subsection, raffle and bingo licensing, to the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey to delegate the municipal clerk the authority to approve the granting of raffle and bingo licenses. First reading.
Okay, since it's first reading, it is not open to the public. Anybody in the council have any questions or concerns? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve 2021-19C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes, second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021, ordinance 20C, I've removed from the agenda. Bruce and I and the chief are still working out the votes, so we're not quite ready to introduce that. So we're going to go on to 21C, an ordinance amending Chapter 43 Affordable Housing, subsection 7 Control Periods for Restricted Ownership Units, Enforcement Mechanisms of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey to provide further clarity on affordability controls governing all affordable housing projects in the Borough of Beach Haven. First reading.
All right, no public comments. This is first reading. And does the council have any daylights for now or have to dress? No? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve 2021-21C?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-22C and ordinance amending Chapter 199 Vehicles and Traffic, subsection 46 Schedule I, Center of the Street Handicap Parking of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey to provide a more comprehensive list of center of the street handicap parking. First reading.
All right, then again, no public comment? Does the council have any comments or questions, concerns? All right, is there a motion to approve 2021-22C?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All matters listed under Item Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds, and any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in full on the minutes. Resolution 122 Refunding a Special Event Rental Fee. Resolution 123 Refunding a 2020 Certificate of Smoke Detector Carbon Monoxide Alarm and Fire Extinguisher Compliance Application Fee. 125 Authorizing the Placement of Leans on Block 166.2 Lot 3 for Property Maintenance Costs. 128 Approving Application for a Fireworks Display on July 4th, 2021 in the area of Taylor Avenue. 129 Acknowledging the Hiring of a Full-Time Laborer in the Department of Public Works. 130 Returning Dumpster Bonds. 131 Returning Park Bond. 132 is the 2021 Salary Resolution. 133 is authorizing submission of Raffle Applications, 3 and 4 for Replant in the Bay. 134 Authorizing Additional Resident Requests for Handicap Parking. And 135 Returning Cut and Cap Fees.
Okay, pretty good list. Are there any questions amongst the council, concerns, anything you'd like to see tabled?
Not me.
No? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions within the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Saffara? Can you adjust the air in here?
Yes, please.
I am freezing. Okay, at this time, we'll move forward to the 2021-2022 Liquor License Renewals. We will read them, and we'll open the floor to public comment for each license before we then take a vote for renewal. Okay? Resolution 160, 2021, is granting a liquor license to Tucker's Restaurant.
So I just open the floor at this point?
Yes.
All right, anybody have anything to say about granting liquor license to Tucker's?
Is this anyone, like, public and us? Okay.
Yes. Seeing none.
Okay. We're not closing it? Is there a motion to approve liquor license for Tucker's Restaurant Incorporated, 160-21?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Resolution 161, 2021, granting a liquor license to Waterfront Restaurants LLC, trading as Black Whale Bar and Fish House.
Okay, open to public comment?
Any member of the public wish to comment for liquor license renewal for Black Whale? Please raise an electronic hand.
No?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we will close it to the public. Is there a motion to approve 161-2021, a liquor license for the Black Whale Bar and Fish House Waterfront Restaurants LLC?
Could I say one thing before we go? In the past, I think--
Use your microphone.
Oh, in the past, I think we had our police chief that he just sort of gave us stats on, you know, how many police calls they had at the various liquor establishments. So we had some idea of, you know, violations and that sort of thing. We're not doing that this time.
He came and met with myself and Colleen this morning and really didn't have any concerns about liquor licenses. Didn't raise any concerns. He didn't feel it necessary that he attend the meeting. So he didn't have any substantial reports to present. Okay. Any answers? Can I, all in favor? Do I have to roll for him? Okay, that's all. I need a motion on 161. So moved.
Second?
That was Nancy. Impressed?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Thank you. 162, 2021, granting a liquor license to J.C. Beach Haven Tavern LLC, trading as Buckaloo's Restaurant and Tavern, Buckaloo's, and Station 117.
Is now open to the public for any comments?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none, close it. And is there a motion to approve 162-2021, granting a liquor license to J.C. Beach Haven Tavern, trading as Buckaloo's Restaurant and Station 117?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I can't vote. Sorry, standing.
Thank you. 163, 2021, granting a liquor license to Seashell Inc., trading as Seashell Resort and Beach Club.
Okay, open to the public for comment?
Not sure how quick people can. Not sure how quick people can. They may be quick on the draw with the electronic hand by now. Seeing none.
Seeing none. Close it. And is there a motion to approve 163-2021, granting a liquor license to Seashell Inc., trading as Seashell Resort and Beach Club?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. 164, 2021, granting a liquor license to Murphy's Grand Supermarket Corporation, trading as Murphy's Market.
Is now open to the public for any comments?
Seeing none?
Seeing none. It's closed. And is there a motion to approve 164-2021, liquor license for Murphy's Grand Supermarket Corporation, trading as Murphy's Market?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 165, 2021, granting a liquor license to Lynn Hart Inc., trading as Don Robbins Liquor Store.
That is now open to the public for any comments? Seeing none. Close it. And is there a motion to approve 165-2021, liquor license for Lynn Hart Inc., trading as Don Robbins Liquor Store?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Resolution 166, 2021, granting a liquor license to the Engleside Inc.
Is now open now to public comment?
Seeing none?
Seeing none. It's closed. And is there a motion to approve 166-2021, liquor license to the Engleside Inc.?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. 167, 2021, granting a liquor license to Bird and Betty's LLC.
Is now open to the public for comment? Seeing none. It's closed. Is there a motion to approve 167-2021, a liquor license to Bird and Betty's LLC?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 168, 2021, granting a liquor license to the Marlin Restaurant and Bar Inc.
Is now open to the public for comment? It's closed. Is there a motion to approve 168-2021, liquor license to the Marlin Restaurant and Bar Incorporated?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finally, 169, 2021, granting a liquor license to the Beach Haven Marlin and Two Club.
Is now open to the public?
Oh, I have something to say. I just want to say something about most of them. The folks of, the ones that are on here that have late night alcohol service, I just want to remind you to make sure, and I'm sure you do, to read your liquor license to make sure that you are providing, you know, helping out the community with issues with noise and things like that outside when people are waiting in line to get into your establishments for vans and things like that, and also when they're leaving your establishments. I live in majority where these places are, and I know some others do. And so just a reminder to just remember that the community here at large, we want you to be able to provide fun and activities for the people that come to visit us in the summer and year-round, but just to be aware of that. So that was all.
I'd like to amend that, and that's, I live there, and I want to congratulate the borough of Public Works for putting those quiet zones signs, quiet zone signs on the other side of the stop signs. Not only are they attractive, and it's just not like another stop sign sticking up, but it's very easy to read and it reminds people to be quiet.
Yeah.
Thank you, Public Works.
Yeah.
Did I see them? Did you open the floor for 160?
I believe I did.
Yeah.
Was it along the Two Club? No? Okay, floor is closed. Is there a motion to approve 169-2021, liquor license to the Beach Haven Marlin and Two Club? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. I have a bill list this evening. The amount is $1,504,471.13.
Is everybody a chance to review the bills? Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills? So moved.
Second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, we are now to the public comment portion of the meeting. So if you open to anybody who has any questions or concerns, please make sure you raise your electronic hand or make yourself known, and may we let yourself three minutes. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. John Hale, 319 Fairview Avenue, Beach Haven, New Jersey, President of the Beach Haven Taxpayer Association. I just want to make a few comments on the offshore wind project. As you know, the Beach Haven Taxpayer Association's objectives for offshore winds is the same as Dr. Stern's, but we had concerns about its implementation. On April 9th, we had a bipartisan panel present via Zoom because we wanted to make sure that there's a lot of facts out there and not just opinions, innuendos, myths, whatever you want to call that. That is now posted on our website. We were also concerned about the lack of response from Bone regarding the Hudson South alternative. We reached out to Bone ourselves and did get a response. And if you recall, there was a letter I posted in the sandpaper a couple of weeks ago that that is still a viable alternative according to Bone. Not only that, we found out that there is a second expert in Beach Haven called Karen Conover, who was involved in implementation of many of the offshore wind projects in Europe and the Americas. She presented to our Beach Haven Taxpayer Association Board. We found her very informative, educational, and I informed Sherri that I thought it would be good for the council to hear what she has to say since she was involved in implementation of a lot of these projects. Lastly, if you are interested as well, the Joint Council of Taxpayer Associations, LBI, is having a program where she's going to presenting on July the 12th. If interested, once I get all the details on where the location is, I could advise council of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to speak? Raise an electronic hand. You can unmute yourself and make yourself heard. Or you can start sticks if you're in a regular voting and announce yourself. You can unmute yourself, stick your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
There you are, yes.
Thank you. My name is Edward Lefty Grimes. I'm with sativa cross.org. We're a 501(c)(3) here in New Jersey, advocating for disabled rights and for cannabis patients' rights. And I'd like you to consider a medical dispensary in Beach Haven. I was just down there this week to visit a friend who's a vet, and he's unable to get fully extracted cannabis oil in Beach Haven. So I brought him a tithing, which I'm legally allowed to do, and I brought him a tithing, some cannabis oil, because not only is he suffering from PTSD and back and shoulder and neck and leg injuries from jumping out of airplanes, he literally had a thousand jumps out of airplanes. And he has PTSD. He's 100% disabled. And now he has cancer. Just found out he has cancer on top of all that other stuff that he was already a medical patient for. Now he has to deal with this. And now he has to deal with the stress of where he lives banning his medicine. Where he lives down in Beach Haven, it's very hard for him to get his medicine. He has to drive an hour, as it is. And this is a vet. I mean, and there's other sick people in your town. There's children with epilepsy. There's a lot of sick people that could use this medication. This is God's medicine, and I feel we're stigmatizing God's medicine. We're not stigmatizing all these other pharmaceutical drugs. We're not banning synthetic marijuana. Synthetic marijuana is sold in pharmacies. It's been sold in pharmacies for many, 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 many years. It's called Marinol and Jonapinol. And it's synthetic. Does the same thing as regular marijuana would do, THC. We're not stigmatizing that. We're not all up in arms about people driving on that stuff that's sold in the pharmacies. But all of a sudden, God's medicine finally gets legalized by two-thirds of our population. They wanted, people just want it recreationally. I'm talking about medical. I'm talking about carving out a place for compassion for sick and dying people, especially down there in Beach Haven. There's nowhere else to go. My friend is kind of in a rough spot down there. So I brought him a tithing and he's feeling better. He had his surgery and he's feeling better. But we have to help people. We have to put the last first because we're not doing that in New Jersey. I'm so glad to see that you're doing a Zoom meeting. A lot of towns have stopped doing Zoom meetings, and they're going back to in-person meetings. And my problem with that is that disabled people have been asking for years, what you have given to able-bodied people for 14 months. For 14 months, you gave us online schooling, online work, online church, online council meetings, and now they're taking it all away. And I'm asking some towns to give us disabled accommodations, and they refuse to do it. It's not like they can't do it. They did it 14 months for healthy people. Now they can't do it for disabled people? So we're going to be carving out a bill for that, too. Senator Stack has been kind enough to work on some kind of an ordinance because the towns just don't care. They don't have compassion. And I'm glad that you still have these in-person meetings. It's very important to keep disabled people in the loop because they want to take part. My friend Jeff took part from his deathbed. He literally called in from his deathbed, from cancer. He had stage four cancer. I don't know if you ever followed our story, but last year he went to Sussex and he called from his deathbed. He told them he was calling from his deathbed. He wouldn't be able to take part any other way. And I want to hear from those people.
Mr. Grimes, we have a three-minute limit. Can you wrap it up?
Thank you. "They went with songs to the battle. They were young, straight of limb, true of eye, steady and aglow. They were staunch to the end, against odds uncounted. They fell with their faces to the foe. They shall grow not old, as we that are left grow old. Age shall not worry them, nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun, and in the morning, we will remember them." Thank you, council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Marina Redman? You can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi. Marina Redman, Freeboro Square, Harlan, New Jersey. I also-
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Ready as loud as you can.
Okay, um, yes, I'm doing my best. I'm also with Sativa Cross, and I also like love to discuss medical cannabis, medical marijuana, and how much it's helped me in my journey through PTSD and through my journey with cancer. Between the ages of one and four and a half, I had a bunch of surgeries done on my leg in a major New York City hospital. Back then, you weren't allowed. Your parents weren't allowed to stay over, so they had to walk away from you. And I'm like one, two, three, four years old. The nurses treated me very nice, but I still wanted my mother. And back then, it was different. It was scary, horrible. And then now, these days, your parents can walk you in the operating room. Well, when I had my operation, I wasn't allowed to have that happen. And yes, I know things are different, but this is what built my PTSD with doctors and hospitals and medical staff. And unfortunately, in 2017, I was diagnosed with cancer. And it was horrible. I lost 50 pounds within three weeks because I could not get my medicine. It was horrible. Because the card and the process takes so long. Any type of medication they gave me from the pharmacy didn't work. Alls I did was vomit, and I couldn't move. Once I started smoking my medical cannabis, it was a game changer. It was wonderful. I could actually do things. I have doctors tell me before they examine me, examine, give me examination, "Please smoke." When I was having my chemo done, they'd look at you, "Go smoke out in the parking lot. Don't worry about it. The cops won't say anything. You show them your card." And it was, it was, I can't express how much this has helped me and to please keep open your minds for a medical dispensary. You have 280 Walgreens in the state of New Jersey, almost 400 CVSs, and we hardly have any dispensaries all around. There's 64 psychiatrists in New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis to help all their patients with all different types of PTSD and trauma. There's even 10 pediatric doctors that prescribe medical cannabis. Pediatric doctors, doctors that are dealing with all sorts of children's medical challenges. So just please keep medical cannabis dispensary open. Thank you so much.
Marina, where are you from? What city are you from?
Harlan, New Jersey. It's Sayoville, Harlan.
Thank you. Jeffrey King? You can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Evening. My name is Jeffrey King. I'm at 24 Elizabeth Parkway in Eaton Town. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak and attend this meeting. And I do, as Mr. Grimes, I appreciate that they're allowing people to participate remotely. Eaton Town is going to do a hybrid in the future because participation is up substantially, and that's a good thing. So thank you for hearing us with our pleas for mercy and compassion for medical patients especially. If you can find any kind of room for a medical dispensary, that would be really, I think, an asset to the community. And I don't mean the jobs and the real estate and the ratables and the income, although the $50,000 a month that would help youth programs, I think that's a good idea. Especially if you have a delivery service. I think Councilwoman Nancy Taggart was really on point with that. Think that that's a- Just think about the AARP has endorsed medical cannabis and the American Legion, wholeheartedly supported veterans organization. So I think you can find room in your community for that. That would be very compassionate. That would be absolutely the kind of leadership that is needed in our state, our community, our world, really. But, you know, the pharmaceuticals and the alcohol have traditionally been in place, grandfathered in, so to speak, and we don't want to push them out, push them aside. Well, I do. Cannabis patients and even the social users don't mind pushing aside those dangerous substances. So we want to tell communities and elected officials, the vote in New Jersey was affirmative on home growing as well as dispensaries, corporate operations. We want small micro licenses. We want our local friends to run these operations, people that you grew up with, and you can work together for the community's sake. So please just keep in mind, you know, the community, the vision of the future is a positive one. So thank you very much for hearing us. Good evening.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Michael Peeler? You can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
I, uh, I didn't realize I muted myself. I mean, I raised my hand. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if you can see me. Okay. 208-
You know you wanted to speak, Michael.
Yes, 208 North Bay Avenue, me and my big boy Willie. I hear the talk about the medical marijuana. Is there a consideration of not doing this, or is there friction about this? Because everybody feels Panama Reds are going to be coming to town and taking your daughter away? If you're not familiar with that, but anyway.
It's still, it's still up for debate. The council has not taken a stand.
Okay, well, you should stand above and beyond the narrow-mindedness and small-mindedness of people and their taboo head of drugs. Everybody's going to abuse everything, from water to Gatorade to pain pills. People abuse everything, even the speed limit on the parkway. I happened to abuse the parkway speed limit tonight. But that being said, these people made a good point about the medical marijuana, and it should not be dismissed. People are struggling. And I think you should really consider it regardless of the friction you may feel from a lot of the old fogies in town. And the other thing is the wind turbines. I sort of resented when Ed Kennedy blocked the wind turbines in Massachusetts because you could see them. But since then, I've had a change of heart. People are, oh, you can't even see me again. People are struggling, and vacations are really important to hold families together, to hold communities together, and to hold people themselves together, to look out over the ocean and dream. I'm all for wind energy, but I agree, you shouldn't be able to see it. It's bad enough we got to see a fat man in a Speedo. We don't have to see wind turbines. I'm all for energy, but let's move them back. And I think the town should financially support this fight. We are a destination town, and people, people survive by dreaming and thinking and coming to Beach Haven, to feel the wind, to hear the laughter, and just live. It's important. We need good energy. Move it the heck back.
Thank you.
Okay, and I see- We are a destination town, and people, people survive by dreaming and thinking and coming to Beach Haven, to feel the wind, uh, to hear the laughter and just live. It's important. We need good energy. Move it the heck back.
Thank you.
Okay. And I see there was a, the tax guy was there tonight. Are you guys opening this up for, uh, in person, or you're going to stay with Zoom?
Both.
Good. Zoom's good.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Nice to see everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you. Jennifer, Jamie, you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. We can't hear you. We see your mouth talking, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Technology. Jennifer, Jamie, Cedar Island, 4th Street. I'm a former resident of Beach Haven, lifelong resident of Long Beach Island. I grew up in Surf City. I know I've come to meetings before to talk about cannabis. I can't believe other people are here, but they're not from this town. They're not from around here. There are a lot of people for it from around here. They just won't come to these meetings. And I have to tell you, it does take a lot out of me to come to these meetings and talk. It's really difficult, you know, to talk about something that has such a stigma. But last time I talked about the money. This time, I just want to give you a couple of facts, because I know that there's a lot of fear about the kids and what's going to happen. Legalization of marijuana results in decreased teen marijuana use. Researchers at the Washington University School of Medicine found that, I quote, "The rates of marijuana use by young people are falling, despite the fact more US states are legalizing or decriminalizing cannabis use." And the number of adults, um, use of the drug has increased. Traffic deaths and arrests for DUIs do not increase, they may decrease when marijuana use is legalized. In the states that have legalized it, that DUIs and the things I've just mentioned, they've dropped by 11% actually. And it's also safe for the consumer. A lot of people are talking about medical cannabis. There are tons of people who are smoking street stuff. You're taking money out of the hands of these kingpens, uh, kingpens, cartels, you know? It would be regulated for safety. You would be protecting the people that are already in your town smoking it. Like I said, I'm one of the, I'm, I'm the only person who lives here that shows up to these meetings, but we all talk about it behind closed doors. So like I said, it takes a lot, small town. Like I just mentioned, it phases out the black markets and takes away monies from cartels. And that's what I've got today. Crime goes down when marijuana is legalized. I mean, these are proven facts. And I just wanted to mention those things today. And I also wanted to say that I would love to run a dispensary in the town. I know you don't want a dispensary of physical location that people walk in and out of, and that's fine. I would love to have a delivery service. My background is limousine service. I used to, you know, my family owns a limousine company in town, and I think that it would be a great opportunity. I would like to give back to the community. I would like to be more involved. I would like to be a part of this town and where I grew up. And I think that, again, you guys are going to miss out on a huge money-making opportunity with all of these other towns saying no. You know, 66% of the population now accepts cannabis use, and that number is only going to go up with legalization all over. And I guess that's all I have to say today.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Any other member of the public like to be heard during the public comment session? Raise an electronic hand. Okay. I don't see any other hands.
Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Sweet emotion, right? Is there motion?
You don't need that.
I agree on so many motions, so I'm getting a little punchy here. Okay, so then that's come down to the final remarks by Counsel. And again, in all fairness, we're going to start from the end of the albat, so Mrs. Rutherford.
Good thing I came prepared. So I just, thank you so much. This is a good meeting tonight. I wanted to just acknowledge the, um, the big outcome of the art walk from this past weekend. It was really great to see a lot of people out and about, enjoying the artists and enjoying the community, enjoying our businesses. So I thank the Beach Haven Chamber for putting that on and doing a good job with that, and, and for the public safety and things that had to go into play for that, too. So thank you all for that. Looking forward to summer, right around the corner, if not already. So just encouraging, um, town people and, and visitors alike to be on alert when you're biking, walking, driving your car. And lastly, in a, basically, I heard a lot of people talking about cannabis, and that was something I wanted to say, that council will be deciding on cannabis distribution in town. So, um, you know, I know the vote here was more pro than against for legalizing cannabis, medical, or recreational cannabis, but the question on the ballot was not necessarily for shop-in-town. So I appreciate these folks who came today. I'd also like to hear some of our town people come and speak and, and give your opinion on whether you want to have a dispensary here in town, or a delivery service, or any of the six, six options that are out there. So I'm glad to hear that we're doing a presentation on July 12th. So, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
Uh, yeah, thank you. And I totally agree, the art walk was spectacular, and the Chamber did a great job. Lindsay Ryan headed the art walk. I know my daughter-in-law was involved in publication and the weather cooperated, and it was just a lovely day. It was really fun. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce. I do want to just make a statement about marijuana. I think everybody realizes that I do support, um, a small business in town, particularly relating to medical marijuana. I will say that my, my husband might not be alive today, like many of you spoke, if it weren't for that. He weighed less than me a year ago, and he's put on about 60 pounds, and I attribute that to maybe just some gummy bears and, and a few, and, and it helps with the pain. It also helps with sleeping. I think, I think a business in town that was, educated people about medical stuff, that didn't, I, I don't want a lot of people hiding out there, but I, I think if we could deliver it. I, I also feel very strongly, I know there was a very unflattering letter in the sandpaper this week about me. It made it look like I wanted all the kids to go get high on marijuana, which is absolutely not true, and I will have a rebuttal in the upcoming sandpaper. But I, I really feel that it's better to have a legalized product versus an illegal product. We know right now that illegal cannabis is being sold in Beach Haven and all these towns all the time. And when you sell illegal drugs, they're often adulterated with other drugs. You don't get the dosage right, and they can be very dangerous. If a legalized drug is available and you have education relating to, um, medical uses, it's a much more beneficial way of dealing with this. And it, and it decreases the illegal business in your area, because we as a town would have control of what the business looked like and how it was done and the hours it operated. And also, we would know that everything being sold was totally legitimate and was the right thing. I, I also want to mention that the security for any marijuana business is very, very strict. So the chances of children or young people getting marijuana from a legitimate business, it'd be a lot easier for a young person to get it from an illegal business than a legitimate business. Their licenses are very expensive, and if a legitimate business gets caught selling marijuana to an underage person, um, they would lose their license. In addition, I, I don't believe any young person with a developing brain should be taking any drugs, including alcohol, marijuana, or any drugs. And I do feel that revenue coming in from any source would, we could develop programs that would basically find other activities for young people to do besides sitting around using illegal drugs. And I think there's many uses for any money that would come with a tax. That, that's basically my point of view, and thank you very much. And summer's here?
Thank you. Mrs. Rutherford?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Stern, Dr. Bob Stern, for the update, and just to give a little background that he is a wealth of information and knowledge. He is an engineer who previously managed the office in the US Department of Energy that oversaw the protection of the environment as relates to energy programs and projects. So again, he is a wealth of information and always my go-to for this, for these actually wind projects. There's many more coming. This is not the, the only one. And it's really important to be aware of things that are happening, so that you can educate yourself and make an educated decision on these. So thank you, Dr. Stern, for that update. The art walk, again, thank you for, the Chamber did an excellent job. I was there, that's why I'm almost blowing my bed sunburn. It was a beautiful day. There, I saw a lot of people that I hadn't seen were here. It was great to be, to actually talk to them without my mask. So thank you for the, all of the effort that went into the, the art walks. Also, thank you for the people that were, spoke today about the cannabis, especially the medical use of that. And I can't really talk, I'll get really upset and choked up, so I'm going to save that for the July meeting. I have something formally written down about that. But I do appreciate your comments, and I'd also like to hear from some people in the public that live in the Bee, in the Beach Haven area. I also have my own personal opinion, but I would really like the public to weigh in on, on this decision that is going to, you know, affect our community. Next Thursday, or, excuse me, this Thursday, the 17th, is the Beach Haven graduation at Veterans Park at 6:00 PM. So if you are walking around town, please come at 6:00 PM to see our sixth graders graduate as they move to Southern Regional. It's always, uh, they change for class of 15 to go into class of 2000. So come by and see them. And being that this is the next two weeks of graduation, please keep your balloons to yourself. Usually after graduation, my husband pulls at least two huge trashcans of balloons out in Atlantic Ocean, so please be wary of that. And I'm ending with that this is the end of the school year, and it feels like every weekend is 4th of July with the amount of people that are here. So please be cautious and courteous to your neighbors. We're all a smart town. We are a small-town community. We like to keep it clean, and we like to keep it safe. So other than that?
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
What she said. No, I agree on all the points of Mr. Stern. I thank you for being a watchdog and looking out for the island of hope on the window issue. Cannabis issue, I would like to echo, you know, that the public, July 12th meeting comes out, whether you're for it or against. It's been, you know, the hard experience on counsel that most of the people that come to meetings have a problem or something. So it's kind of hard for us to gauge the temperature of the town. So if you're for it as well, please come out. And I would also like to say please come out, support the sixth graders when they're southern. I know we got an email asking us to attend. Unfortunately, I have to be out of town from that day, but I would like somebody to take my hose if they would be so kind.
I'll be there.
And, uh, yeah, I mean, like, the art walk was a success. I was stuck at my business all weekend. I didn't get to get up there. It was very busy. But based on the footage I saw, I can only imagine, it's not like I'm in the town, you know, which there was no disturbances, everything went off without a hitch. I think it was a credit for you looking out there, and it was a well-planned out, thought-out event that seemed very successful. As the water gets warmer, careful in the ocean, it is going to, so let's get somewhere going.
I want to give a little pat on the back to Mary Claire and Chief Markowski, who were right on the ground, helping these guys pull it together. So thank you to them, too.
Yeah.
Well, going as per usual, it's, uh, everything's been said very eloquently, and everything else is, for me, is just repetitious. Dr. Stern always, he's my pen pal, he keeps me up to date and really fills me in on all the stuff that's going on, and very, very grateful to have such an excellent watchdog in our community. The elementary school graduation, looking forward to that. They asked me if I wanted to give a brief speech, and, you know, when I found out the Governor Murphy called, and then Arnold Schwarzenegger sent them the message, it's really tough out to follow. Cannabis discussion, we'll look forward to that on July 12th, which said, you know, anybody who has anything to say, that would be a great time after the presentation. And again, the art walk was wonderful, had a great time, and I had talked to a couple of business owners who were very appreciative to get these things back up and running again. So thank you very much. And is there now a motion to adjourn? So moved. Senator? Thank you all.
All in favor? We adjourn.